Hey, everyone. Just letting you know we're live on YouTube and two minutes out from starting the meeting.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Kaitzer.
Hey, everyone.
Hey, guys.
Hey, everybody. Nice to see you.
Brent, do you have your tea?
Yeah, right here. Do you?
I do, too.
Yeah, it looks like we're waiting for Mr. Bloomingfeld and Mr. Jeffries. Hi, everybody. I'm loaded up on Diet Coke, ready to roll. How's it going, Karen?
Great, Brent. How are you?
Not bad, not bad.
Are your kids doing okay?
Uh, they're, yeah, they're doing fine. My daughter loves them.
Great.
Your kid, are your kids doing okay?
Yeah, yep, they're doing well.
Okay, we're at five. I'm still looking for Dan and Andrew.
Are we live? Are we live, Jamie?
Okay.
Yeah, I turn it on about 20 minutes before the meetings now. So, and I just put up the, everybody can see right now, just a special board meeting starting at five, and then, so once you join, we're already live.
I found Dan. He's joining us right now. Just waiting on Andrew.
Did anyone text Andrew?
I just did, yeah.
Hey, Dan. How are you?
Good. How you guys doing?
I think we have the same painter, Dan. That green shade is pretty close to what we have here at the Rataball House.
Yeah, it's one of Andrea's favorite colors.
It's soothing. Earthy.
I much prefer the blues.
Okay, that's why Andrea and I like each other so much, because we both like the green.
Okay, I think Andrew has the wrong, a different link. Jamie, I know there was two that went out. It's the one from you or the one from Kim? I think I went with Kim's.
I was at the wrong place also, but somehow Jamie switched me over to the right place. She's magic.
I'll resend to Andrew right now.
Okay. Okay, he's, he's waiting. So he'll, he'll join shortly.
And are we broadcasting this live?
Mm-hmm. Yep. We have, I think, 11, 14, 14 watching so far.
All righty, we're in business. We didn't want to start without Andrew.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I was on the wrong link.
No, we're good. Okay, Jamie, ready to roll?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, good evening, everyone. Everyone joining us out there, welcome to our meeting, our special board meeting tonight. My name is Joe Rataball, Governing Board President. It's my pleasure to call the meeting to order. And before we get too far along, I want to read my normal script about the Brown Act and some changes that we, we adopted earlier in the year. On March 17th, 2020, our governor issued Executive Order N. 2920. Under this new order, a district can now comply with public attendance and comment requirements of the Brown Act by holding a meeting via teleconferencing and allowing members of the public to observe and comment either telephonically or otherwise electronically. Public comments are being accepted online and will be read by district staff after board discussion of the presented items. And with that, we'll move along to the Pledge of Allegiance. How about, Dan, could you lead us?
All right, if you could please join me. Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Since it is a special meeting and we have some different procedures than normal, we can get right into, my understanding is the public hearing, hearing. And that's the first item on the agenda, which is call and order, Public Hearing on Learning Continuity Plan, R. 382021. The Governing Board of La Cañada will hold a public hearing prior to the adoption of the Learning Continuity Plan. That'll happen next week, Tuesday. So with that, I will open up the public hearing. And do we have any comments from the public as of now related to the, either this or technically the next agenda item?
Yes, we do have one public comment that I can read. And this comes from David Haxton, community member, and he writes, near the top of page 11 of the draft of the Learning Continuity Plan, it says, "At all schools, site administration will determine pickup locations to minimize student wait time in groups. This statement needs to be fleshed out to, to address whether schools will allow pickups off-campus, and if so, whether the schools will supervise those off-campus pickup locations. At the high school, many students walk over to Hahamunga Park or to the nearby residential area by Vero and Lemoore, where they have arranged with a parent to get picked up. They congregate and socialize while waiting, some more than a half hour. Other high school students congregate at the bus stop on Oak Grove and crowd onto foothill buses. In the past, the high school has taken a not-my-problem stance regarding what students do once they leave campus after school is out, but given the high risk of virus transmission from students congregating and socializing, it is a school's problem. The Learning Continuity Plan should say whether students getting picked up will be required to be picked up at the school campus. It should also say whether school personnel will supervise students at off-campus pickup locations and at the bus stop. And it should say whether the school personnel will actively limit the number of students who can board each bus. The schools can do everything right to minimize virus transmission on their campuses, but it will be for not if the students are allowed to be picked up at off-campus locations without supervision." And that's our only comment at the moment.
Do we want to address that and talk about it here, or do you want to fold it into the next? Unless there's some comments right now, Karen or Wendy?
Um, well, I think that's a good suggestion, and we can take it under advisement and bring it to the board for second read next Tuesday. But it is something that I agree with Mr. Haxton that we probably should look at and at least address, and then back up with any kind of site policy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Haxton. Anything else, Jamie?
No. But I'll, I'll keep it open.
Okay, well, then I think we're, we can officially close the public hearing, correct? All right, then I move to, do I need to, do I need a motion to close it?
No, I think you just, just hit your, your gavel.
Okay.
Your stapler on your desk.
All right, stapler, here it is. It's not a red stapler, it's a black stapler, though. Okay, here we go. Okay, so closed. All right, well, then that takes us technically into 4A. And I'll turn over to Wendy and Karen.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is to just introduce this item, and then Karen has a presentation for the board, followed by board discussion, and then any community or public comment. So the Learning Continuity Plan, another acronym, LCP, it memorializes the district's planning process for the current school year, 2020-2021, and it talks, and all districts are required to provide these plans, board-adopted, and the local educational agency has to do the following. We have to offer classroom-based instruction wherever possible, describe our processes there, provide continuity of instruction, and ensure full access, access to the full curriculum. We also need to identify and address gaps in learning, conduct meaningful stakeholder engagement, maintain transparency, address the needs of our unduplicated pupils, as well as our students with exceptional needs, provide the access necessary to students for devices and connectivity in distance learning, and provide resources and supports to address student and staff mental health and social emotional well-being. And then also finally to continue to provide school meals for all students. This plan was developed largely at Karen, with Karen's leadership, but she involved the entire leadership team, as well as did extensive outreach to community members, and we had a very robust LCP meeting in lieu of our LCAP meeting, so a lot of community feedback was garnered. In addition, we've had other mechanisms for community feedback, and I think it's a very authentic and robust plan. There are other things that I would, you know, want to discuss, but I think they'll come up in, in potentially public comments, so I think I'll save the, the feedback for there, for that time. But Karen, thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Governing Board members and cabinet members for allowing me to present the draft of our Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan this evening. So just to give everyone a little bit of background, every three years, California public school districts are required to create a local control and accountability plan, otherwise known as the LCAP. So the LCAP is a three-year plan that describes the goals, actions, and services, as well as expenditures to support positive student outcomes that address state and local priorities. So this year, due to COVID-19 and the school closures, districts are not required to write the LCAP, but rather to complete this Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. So this plan is a part of the requirements under Senate Bill 98. So the Learning Continuity Plan replaces the LCAP for the 2020-21 school year and supersedes the requirements in Executive Order N. 5620. So we won't actually have a full LCAP until June of 2021. So this is a plan for the 2020-21 school year. And like Wendy mentioned, this plan is intended to memorialize the planning process that's already underway for the, for the 2020-21 school year. So, under the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, like Wendy was mentioning, we're required to do quite a few things, including outline how we're going to mitigate potential learning loss, how we're going to track engagement, and any other steps that the district has taken in order to roll out distance learning and plans for remote and hybrid learning this school year. So I thought it would take a little bit of time this evening just to review the process we took to develop this plan in partnership with our many stakeholder groups. So as you all know, on March 13th, LCUSD closed its schools in response to the COVID-19 health pandemic. Regular communication from our superintendent Wendy and site administrators, as well as district personnel, was sent to all stakeholders. We held regular and emergency governing board meetings. They were held virtually, allowing stakeholders to ask questions, share comments, and provide feedback. LCUSD staff responded to all the stakeholder questions, comments, and feedback during these board meetings and posted written responses on the LCUSD district website. In early May, parents, students, and teachers completed a distance learning survey to collect feedback that focused on education, as well as well-being and technology. The survey results were then analyzed and posted on the district website. In early June, the superintendent Wendy established the reopening of Schools Committee, which was comprised of teachers, staff, parents, administrator, administrators, and governing board members. And this was done in order to create a plan for the reopening of schools this fall. The reopening committee was divided into two separate committees, the Elementary Reopening Committee and the Secondary Reopening Committee. Both the elementary and secondary reopening committees met separately throughout the summer months, developing plans for the elementary and secondary virtual learning academy, as well as in-person instructional models. We held four town hall meetings in July, as well as a special education. We held four town hall meetings in July, as well as a special education town hall meeting. All questions and comments during the town hall meetings were responded to in writing and posted on the LCUSD website. Additionally, the district met virtually with the Certificate Labor Association and Classified Labor Association throughout the spring and summer to prepare for the reopening of school. And the district continues to meet with its labor partners as the pandemic unfolds and situations change and additional needs are identified. So this draft of the plan has also been taken to our District LCAP Committee, as Wendy mentioned, so that members could have the opportunity to provide feedback. And they did provide some really great feedback. It was also, this plan was also shared with the district's English Language Advisory Committee, and all public comments received during both meetings were taken into account, and amendments were made to the document. All questions and comments were also responded to in writing. So this brings us to this evening's public hearing. Any public comments we may receive this evening, we will look at our draft and make amendments accordingly. The final draft will then be presented during the September 29th Governing Board Meeting for the second read and final adoption. So any forthcoming changes to the plan will be shared during the September 29th Governing Board as well. And before we look at the public comments, I also wanted to highlight that I have sent our draft of the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan to the Los Angeles County Office of Education for review. They are actually the ones that we have to submit our plan to. So they have reviewed it, they've given us feedback, we've made adjustments to our plan according to the feedback that they've shared with us. That's it. And we have, once we submit it, we have, once it's approved, sorry, once it's adopted on the 29th, we have five days to submit it to the Los Angeles County Office of Education.
Wendy, are we going through, and you mentioned, I think there might be a presentation? Is that the second agenda item, or is there anything that we're going to see visually?
No, sorry, that was my presentation.
Okay, gotcha, I just want to make sure it wasn't.
It was lovely. Thank you, Karen.
Okay. And I just want to build on a couple points real quick, and say that thanks to everyone involved, especially Karen's leadership, to reach out to the stakeholder groups. I personally, as well as many people I know, attended from the LCAP perspective, because that, like you mentioned, the LCAP team was the primary mechanism for us to gather that feedback on our priorities. And so it's getting repurposed as part of this plan now. And I was really impressed with how prepared people were. It's a, it was a long, it's a long document, it's 30-plus really dense pages with a lot of content, and the community feedback, like Wendy mentioned, was robust and very detailed. So I saw that firsthand, was very impressed, and I've already seen that you've taken some of that and folded that in, so.
Yeah, I really appreciated the community input, actually, and we, I have made the changes too, so it was really good feedback, just like David Haxton, that's great feedback too, so, thank you.
So then, are we going to move into, pull out of item 4A and go into 5 officially to continue discussions? Any recommendations on that?
So Joe, what I think that the way that the agenda is laid out, 4A was actually the public hearing, because the 4A identifies what the hearing will be on, and so actually we're on first read item.
Okay, so let's officially transition for the record to that we're on 5, yeah. Okay, that wasn't clear to me, sorry. Okay, so we are in official 5, so okay, then let's, feedback, I know that, and Wendy, if you wanted to go any more detail, but I think it's really important to know that, I think there was some buzz going around a couple, last couple hours, that this was only about reopening plan very, very narrowly in terms of schedules at elementary and 712. And just to reframe it, it's really the more holistic plan around everything, and yes, there's a part of it which we have to submit, which is what would be our reopening schedules, our hybrid schedules, and we can certainly spend some time talking about that, but I think we need to talk holistically about everything. Any comments that the board has, or attention to things that Karen or Wendy want us to debate, talk?
One of the things I just might want to reference is that this plan is for us to file, and it's the sort of the legal document, but it goes hand in hand with the school reopening and safety plan. And I think another, it references it, and they're also very much tandem documents, sort of balance each other nicely. And this was sent out to, you know, all teachers, all staff, and all parents. And so I think that in terms of the requirement for transparency, that was definitely met. I know, Joe, you referenced a little bit, and I don't know how, what order we'll take this, but there was, you know, one of the components in this plan that's marked, the only component in this plan, that is marked, sort of draft, is the secondary hybrid schedule for when we reopen in person at a 50% capacity at the high school. And I want to give credit to the Secondary Reopening Committee, they've spent hours and hours, I wanted to indicate to the public what a difficult process it is. We were able to create the elementary schedule fairly easily. It was designed as an AM/PM schedule. We created the virtual learning academy to allow students to remain virtual all year. Families committed to that, and then the principals scheduled students into the AM and PM daily bell schedule. And that's in place. We will seamlessly transition using that schedule, given, you know, when we're able to reopen at the elementary level. But the high school is more complicated. You can't really build a stable 12 to 15, 16-person cohort, because students change classes. You also have issues of when students change classes, the mixing, and so that creates potential health risk. You have the commitment to families to be allowed to remain virtual for the year until, you know, until or unless the COVID virus was be able to be met with a vaccine. And so what you have is you have teachers who are delivering five periods of instruction out of six, sometimes all six, if they're on a sixth schedule, and you have to figure out how to structure that schedule so that they're able to engage with the 50% of the learners who are in front of them. And also, during that schedule, reach out to and engage, deliver direct instruction to the alternate cohort and the cohort that is elected to remain virtual all year. So it's been a bit of a daunting schedule. Our priorities, just to sort of explain where the committee is, the committee forwarded two schedules. We have looked, district staff and administration has looked at probably since April, at a minimum of 30 sample schedules. We have surfaced with the committee at least 10. It's been, we've gone back and done iterations, we've taken their advice, we've, you know, taken feedback, we've met numerous times, and it's been a really good process, very intensive. We finally surfaced two schedules, and we met yesterday, and the, there was great collaboration, but ultimately, the consensus of the committee was fairly split. And so we took all the feedback, and we've taken it to Cabinet. Jamie, Anna East, and I didn't mean to exclude Mark, but his schedule was full. So we spent the day really looking at both schedules through what we think are our most important lenses, through what will benefit students most, what will provide for safety, and what will protect our, the integrity of our instructional program. So what we're prepared to do is to bring a recommendation, a full agenda item, to the board on Tuesday, have the board vote on the recommendation or the recommended schedule. That would make its way into not only the Learning Continuity Plan, but into the School Reopening and Safety Plan. But then Karen has reached out to Los Angeles County Office of Education, and if we wanted to, at that point, still make changes, we would be able to. Any significant or substantive changes, we would always obviously bring to the board, since it would have adopted a schedule, we would bring to the board to re-adopt.
Actually, we have to, we have to officially adopt this plan.
29. I know, Karen, but there are opportunities for changes and for refinements.
Right.
We're not, we're not, once it goes into your plan, it's not set in stone. So my comment to the community is that it's important for us to land on a schedule, we will adopt and land on a schedule, we will probably evaluate that, but it's also important for us to land on a schedule, because the next step is really, as we were reminded by one of our committee members yesterday, there are extensive COVID protocols that have to be built upon these schedules. We're very much, we're very much at the ready and in process with that at the elementary schedule, but our high school is significantly more complex, and so we need to begin that work. So we'll bring to the board for adoption on Tuesday, and that will happen, and it will be included in the Learning Continuity Plan. But I don't want people, and I feel like we have a strong recommendation to make to the Governing Board that focuses on those three priorities, as I stated, you know, our student learning, our integrity of our instructional program, and the health and safety of our school community at the secondary level. But I don't want people to think that there is anything less than transparent, and a lot of good, significant work, that was very collaborative and very reflective, but it's made its way to Cabinet, because we were sort of at a place where the consensus of the committee was not divided, but it was slightly, it's split. It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, a clear consensus or unified consensus didn't emerge.
So my understanding, just to be clear, is that we, to Karen's point, we have to submit the best plan we have at this time, end-to-end, completed, thorough, stakeholder input, submitted. But if we have a couple components that have to be revised, we have the right to do so, even change course completely on an area if we have to. So we could submit something, get started, and find it's not working, and change, or potentially change even before we launch, right?
Correct, and we do not have to rewrite the plan. Basically, they just want to know, the state wants to know, we have a plan. But if we need to make a change, we can go ahead and make a change in any area if we find it doesn't work, but the plan does not have to be rewritten.
That was my next question, because if you look on page nine, it details out some level of information related to the 712 program. And so I think we just need to be prepared to, I think that came up in the LCAP meeting too. Someone asked that, hey, once we submit it, is it a dynamic plan, or do we, can we, can we submit it and then just move on? Or we have to keep on refreshing it every time we make a small change? And you were saying no.
No, but for transparency, we would bring the section to the board as an informational item to say we've changed this, but we don't have to update the plan.
Joe, can I ask a question of Karen?
Of course. Please, Karen, anybody.
Karen, thank you for that comment. So if we do have some adjustments, which in reality, we're going to, this is just a tumultuous year. So I think reality states that we are going to see some changes, especially in light of which you were updating us on, Wendy. So when you're bringing it to the board, is that then the evidence that LECO is looking for that we are making shifts, or do they need, do we need to add addendums or submit addendums? Not change the plan, but just keep adding to it? Or just the records in the minutes would be sufficient? And I think what we would do is change this for our, and repost this for public consumption.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We do not have to resubmit anything to LECO.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I know, Dan, you and me attended some of the, oh, you know, I take that back, you could not make the LCAP meeting, that's right. Any questions that, through people's review, because it's a pretty detailed document, it's well-written, it has several components, there's several dimensions of what we're concerned about, learning loss, that's been an issue, English learning, special ed, there's a whole bunch of really detailed components. So I rely on, anybody has a question about specifics? I know it's only first read.
Joe, I have a question. And Wendy, maybe this is in the larger report, larger reopening, I don't, I don't recall, but I just was thinking about the lens of safety and security, when we go to the hybrid, and there's a different scenario of different amounts of teachers and students on the campus, have we, have we rethought our safety protocols? Or a different situation than what we, what we're used to, having the full campus and all the faculty there?
Yes, we have. I mean, I think that there's extensive safety protocols within the School Reopening and Safety Plan. Also, the principals have made adjustments for some of the archetypal safety plans that are on campuses, like earthquake drills, fire drills, all of those things. But the whole safety component that had to be rethought because of COVID-19 are all identified, not only in the reopening plan, our document, they're referenced in the Learning Continuity Plan, and they're also then extensively identified in all of the public health protocols that we're filing.
Great, thanks.
Karen, what was some of the feedback that we got from LECO?
It was mainly with, with just addressing, making sure we addressed the prompts. To be honest with you, I've gotten feedback from so many different people that I don't remember some of the.
I'm just curious about the kinds of things that they're concerned about.
Andrew, some of the things that they forwarded to Karen, that she, you know, asked me to help with the writing, was they wanted a lot of anecdotal examples, they wanted us to really be able to demonstrate the impacts that COVID-19 had on our unique community. And so, you know, sometimes where we would give a narrative that sort of, you know, stayed at the 30,000-foot level, they wanted us to drill down and to give some more specifics.
Yeah, a lot of it was just, it was getting a little bit more in detail, and I thought I already was, gave a lot of detail. But there are certain, there's a rubric, so making sure that we've addressed all of the points in the rubric.
Right, thanks.
I know we have some public comments too, before we move into, I think there's a couple at least incremental ones, any other, any other thoughts? I know that you've made, like I said, I saw that since the last iteration I reviewed, you're able to populate some of the financial impacts, and some of those things you guys came back around on, made, took some of that feedback from the community and onboarded that and inserted it, that's great. So it just seems to me, Wendy, at that point, at this point, where people are probably most concerned about, or the impact on them day-to-day on the schedule, so I think that's where we're going to have to, you know, really turn our focus to. And you laid out the process on that, but to your point, at some point, we have to land on it in a way that allows the runway to get all the other protocols in place against that. You made a very important point, and when you start to run water, so to speak, through the different schedules, each one has nuances on protocols. You know, do you have to do lunch in the classroom or outside the classroom? And if you do or pass, and there's all kinds of things that starts to wrap through whatever scenario we land on, and I know we want a little bit more time. What do we see as the way forward? Do you think Tuesday with internal, or do we need to re-engage the community, or re-engage the reopening team, or do a quick survey of folks? Where do you think to really feel comfortable that we're landing on the best possible scenario we can, before we come back around and make any final, final commitments?
I feel like we've gotten extensive feedback from the community throughout our six-month process. I also feel like the parents and the staff, our teachers and our staff who sit on the committee, are very articulate in addressing the needs. When we selected committee members, we ensured that they represented each school, we made sure we had someone who would be vocal about the needs of our special education learners. You know, so there's a pretty representative sample there. We had at one point, about two weeks ago, thought we would do a survey, but the nuances of the schedule are extremely difficult to discern, and the survey questions that we identified would have, the data would not have been helpful. So what we basically anticipated doing was to, you know, finalize the schedule, and then I was going to do a video presentation where I walked families through the schedule, took questions, and we thought that, you know, at that point, you know, we would have already adopted a schedule, but we could then take any feedback and review it for potential tweaks or refinements. But I feel like we know that, we know the concerns of working parents, we know the concerns about learning loss, we know the concerns about health and safety, we know the concerns with regard to our function, not only as, you know, a local educational agency, but as somewhat of a childcare provider that our community is dependent on. We have heard from our teachers extensively, both at the bargaining table and at the committee. We know the challenges of distance learning. I feel like we have been extremely interactive, and I feel like that we can bring forth to the board a strong schedule that addresses comprehensively the needs that we've heard. Now, it might not be perfect, as you said, Joe, and there may be some things that we can refine after we've brought it to the board, but. But there are components, you know, there we're in a difficult situation. And so there isn't going to be a perfect schedule. We've also reviewed at least 20 high performing California school schedules. And I think that most districts have simply passed their virtual schedule as their hybrid schedule and haven't got given near the length of discernment and discussion about how this would play out for students, for families, for teachers as we have. So I mean, I I I know there's always room for improvement, but our process in this case has, I think, has has been pretty exemplary.
I have been impressed. I've been on the the seven 12 reopening, and I think Dan could attest to that as well, that it's very, very engaged and well attended and and very articulate, objective input from parents and staff, et cetera. So it sounds like we're saying is that because and I and I tend to agree myself is as much as it's a really nuance, it's very, very nuanced. And it's hard to communicate some of those components and all those constraints properly to the community for input that could be leveraged correctly. Because there are so many things that you guys were all considering that kind of ended up why we had to discount 20 or 30 of the schedules that came before that. And there's been several iterative discussions, so I get it. So other thoughts? I think we all agree that that elementary is pretty stable. So the hotspot is nailing down seven to 12. Any other components of the plan that have concern? I know Dan wants to talk any other areas, just it's really down to the seven 12 schedule, right? Dan?
I just wanted to mention the I I think one of the challenges with the seven 12, and I think the reopening committee has done an outstanding job of considering all the different possibilities. But it is a very daunting task because we want to maintain a comprehensive high school. We have a lot of offerings. We have things that make the school interesting for kids, everything from athletics to extracurriculars and choir and band and all those sorts of things. And because we have so many things we want to offer, it's very challenging to try and keep groups small and cohorts small. So I think when people look at the big picture, they realize that that's the the issue, that we don't have that in elementary school because we're able to have distinct groups in elementary school. And for a school that wants to limit their electives or limit the APs or limit the extracurriculars, it might be easier because you could just strip away all those things. And then you would have an easier time of keeping kids in certain groups. But when you want to have all of those things that make our high school unique and all the things that make it good for our students, it makes it very challenging. So I just would comment that it is a daunting task. And I think the secondary committee has done an excellent job. And especially our teachers and administrators on that committee who have spent a lot of time thinking through the very detailed analysis of what does it really look like if you live this schedule?
Okay. Are we ready to go to some public comments? I've seen some nods. Okay, Jamie, how many do we have?
Two.
Two?
So the first one, or third of the night on this topic, second of the night, sorry, comes from Belinda Randolph, community member, and she has five questions. Why has the district not re-surveyed parents and asked about their needs before coming up with a new hybrid schedule? What stakeholder group? Actually, would you like me just to read one at a time? I think that one we addressed already, so I felt confidence confident skipping. But if you want to reiterate, I'm happy to pause.
I mean, I I appreciate the importance of getting extensive feedback. But I feel like we have done that. Our most recent survey was just sort of checking in with families about at the seven 12 level, who was still inclined to to remain virtual? So we could be looking at cohort sizes for students on an alternate schedule. The other part of not surveying is that, you know, we've been getting extensive feedback. And our committee members have been very, very clear about the needs of teachers and staff and parents and students. So, you know, the comprehensive feedback there. But the other thing is that public health has been continually changing some of the orders or the requirements for, you know, what would it? What will it be like to build these hybrid schedules? And I think that there's a little bit of danger in building expectations. If they are going to be, you know, small group. I mean, today I was on the a phone call with Ferrer, and the question was, are you going to require the 12 to one cohorts that you are managing right now with special education? And that you're ordering right now with special education? If they were to do that, and she indicated that they were unlikely to do it. But if they were to do that, our entire plan couldn't be implemented or any plan that we could come up with. So I mean, part of it is is trying to manage expectation and and manage transparency simultaneously. And I feel like that, you know, on Tuesday, when we present this, there'll be plenty of opportunity for public feedback. The board will, you know, adopt and make recommendations. And if the board adopts and make makes recommendations to do a survey now that we have presented all of the details in a in a laid out, clear fashion that the community can understand, then that feedback will be much more meaningful than feedback on a schedule that people aren't really being able to comprehend.
Next question. What stakeholder groups, other than the reopening committee, were consulted? Didn't this committee ask for full parent and student surveys? And I think, Wendy, you alluded that to that earlier about the development of the survey and the complications of explaining the schedule and then the data not valid.
Several surveys, I mean, I we have we the most recent one was about two weeks ago, and it was very targeted. It was about people who were electing to remain virtual. But all of our surveys have have involved all parents or all staff as appropriate. Results are posted on the website. We, you know, have done, you know, we've, you know, mitigated the we've taken the the feedback loop and come back at board meetings. There's been a COVID item at every single meeting where we've referenced the feedback that we're getting. So, you know, I feel like the entire community has been consulted and and the community feedback is informing and has been, you know, trying to meet all stakeholder needs has been, you know, part of the the work of the committee. And it's and it's been, you know, extensively vetted through the committee members.
And just to clarify, we haven't closed the most recent survey, so that data is not up yet on the website. But as a point of clarification, yeah, there's about close to just under 900 families that have responded. And this is a seven 12 survey with a question, would you elect to keep your students home for the rest of the school year? And right now it's tracking at about 27 to 28% of those respondents are saying they would keep their kids home at the seven 12 level for the rest of the year.
And that's a big part of anchoring about, you know, do you create three cohorts? One's the ones, the other people, the folks that are staying at home, and then it allows you to have two more. And then you start building the puzzle around some of those key knowledge points. I can't I can remember a lot of times the committee even asked, do we know how many people would be in that C cohort? Well, you did a survey to try to pull that in, so I get it.
And the next two questions are specifically about the schedule 1A and one that the committee was reviewing for the last two weeks about why those aren't included in this draft report and why haven't they been publicly released?
Those two schedules were under development as late as this weekend. I was working on them based on committee feedback. They were presented to the committee yesterday. They were continued to refined, to be refined. And then the committee sort of weighed in. And there are very salient strengths in each. And there are, in my opinion, and I and I think this is my my cabinet colleagues' opinion as well, very significant limitations. And I did not think that for things that and and we told the committee that because there was, you know, there was were advocates for each schedule that cabinet would take the the two schedules and all the feedback and review and refine that and make use that. And our knowledge of curriculum and instruction and and instructional delivery, instructional program strengths to bring a recommendation to the board. The the limitations in each are 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 strong. And I didn't see a need at this point because we will adopt will adopt a schedule and put it into the in in full view of the community with all the community feedback. The board will take it under advisement and vote to adopt a schedule. But it seemed a little divisive, given the limitations in each schedule, to present them in advance of a recommendation to the board, which will be an agenda item on Tuesday.
And then her final question is, who attended the reopening committee on 9/23? And I think that's something we can get published on our website.
Yeah, I mean, I can, you know, go through the names right now. Joe Radabaugh was there, Dan Jeffries, I was there. Mark was absent because he had a P and day. Anna East Wen was there, Jamie Lu Sada was there. Derek, were you there? You came late, you were there. Allison Dahlbeck was there. Jim Carton was there, Derek Gold was there. I believe Derek Abrego was absent. Melissa Castillo was there. Paige Salardino was there, Sue Cronin was there, Dan Yoder was there, Jeff Brooke was there. Dave Clausen was also in attendance. And then from our parent side, we had Aaron Wade, Angela Savarus Rohan, Carolyn Anderson, Holly Biondo, Janine Purdy, Josh Epstein, Kelly Davis, Kelly McWilliams, Lisa Haber, Matt Weber, Linda Fulmer Schultz, and Miaun Konikov. So the entire committee, except for, I believe, two was present.
Great. And then our final comment comes from Doris Lee, LCUSD parent. And she writes, please take working parents with multiple children's schedules and entire student teacher community health into consideration. What will traffic be like for pickup or drop off? Please send the parent survey again to each group, gen ed, special ed, ELD, since their needs are unique.
Thank you, Doris. And I I believe that, you know, a a better path would be for us to explain, fully vet and explain a schedule, have the governing board adopt it, then survey people for, you know, feedback. Not that we would be able to answer every concern, but with through a lens of productivity, look at the feedback and make any adjustments that were viable. But what you're mentioning, Doris, is very significant. We want to make sure those are the those are the COVID realities and the protocols that we have to build off the schedule. So once we identify a schedule, we can work on drop off. We can drop work on pickup. We can identify the number of stations we need for the health protocols as students enter and exit. We can firmly, you know, execute all of Mr. Haxton's, you know, advice regarding, you know, students leaving campus and how that will be monitored. So there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done. And I think that landing on the schedule is a is an important next step. And and but we are also very comforted by the fact that adjustments can be made as we go because this is, you know, once again, a COVID situation where we're learning flexibility and responsive responsiveness.
Any other part of that? That completes Doris's comment? Did I see we have one more?
No, that's it. Belinda's comment was repeated because she tagged it for two different items, just to make sure. I think it was heard.
Okay. And then Wendy, when do you think, as I keep on coming back to what you opened on, is that what is our the date that we have to have? It's solidified enough that we can put all hang all the other protocols around whatever schedule we land on, so we can start to get that work done? What do you think that timeframe is?
Well, I would really think that we could have the board adopt on Tuesday, do a blush of of feedback. Then that leaves us with a refined schedule. Make sure that that's published. So I think within about two weeks, we can begin the heavy lifting of bargaining the effects of the proposed schedule with our labor associations. And but then also building all of the COVID protocols off of the identified schedule.
Do you do you think that when you come back Tuesday, is it one? Or will you give us, hey, here's two that we were considering, compare and contrast? Here's why we landed here? I'm just curious in terms of what to expect.
Joe, I think I'm happy to present schedule one and schedule 1A. I think that I owe that to the committee because they've worked so hard. I find both schedules to be significantly flawed. And so I will I will recommend to the board a different iteration of the schedule that I think is stronger in terms of instructional program, takes the interests of students into account in a in a stronger fashion, is more attentive to instructional minutes, which I think are critical to prevent learning loss, but still manages to maintain continuity, clarity, health and safety in the interest of all parties that we're trying to consider.
Okay. My fellow board members, everybody comfortable? Is this first read? It's the first step in the process. We have a few more days. We are moving fast. Things are happening very quickly, so I don't think it's out of normal right now with everything going on that we are adjusting as quick as we can as as information comes in. So appreciate that, Wendy.
The other thing, too, is just as an update, I mean, I think we do have time. Last week was the first week that we that both of the metrics, which would allow us to move from the most restrictive purple tier as a county to the red tier. You have to meet those for two consecutive weeks. So we have one week. And then there's a strong indication that we won't meet it again this week because of a Labor Day surge. And so that would again make it so we had to we would re-bench it so that we'd have to have another week with both metrics met and then a consecutive week. Once we then reach those two consecutive weeks, we then have to remain in the red, meeting both markers for two consecutive weeks. So, you know, I know that that we have committed to the community that we would be sort of at the ready, and we are. But I also think that, you know, we have to sort of pay attention to the data as as it dictates, you know, what next steps would be and and what level of heightened response we need to because of the, you know, the the changes in markers that the county is going to offer.
Wendy, you're when you say we, you're talking about LA County, not just La Conyata.
Yes, yes. But they are, I mean, the the County Department of Public Health made it very, very clear again today. They have not opened elementary waivers in LA County. They we are still in the purple tier. They're looking for this this next week's data points. And if they came in, you know, the positivity rates and the case rate came in as last week's did, then we would have two consecutive weeks. They indicated that, you know, they're hopeful, but they think it might be unlikely because it would be exactly when we would typically see a Labor Day surge. They've also indicated to us that once we have the two weeks in the red, then Department of Public Health will be looking at all kinds of data points to then issue to districts what the requirements are for reopening. They may simply be what the protocols are as they exist. Or they they, you know, could identify a staggered approach. They could identify, you know, more specifics on a co-horted approach. You know, but I I feel like there's more data to come and more information to come. But we are, you know, at least, you know, at the very best possible case, several weeks out from public health being able to give us clear guidance for how to proceed with implementing and implementing hybrid schedules and potentially re-opening at a 50% capacity.
My observation is I think we're okay time time wise. Yes, I know we have this immediate deliverable for the county around the continuity plan. And that's what that's their macro process they put in place. But I do think, as speaking on behalf of the community, what I don't want to have happen is if we drag our feet to the extent, if for whatever reason that we can't be on the ready, as you like, as it's it's a perfect way to say it, be on the ready the minute that that things start to open up. So it seems like we have that runway right now to work through the the pieces. So I'm there's no red alarms going on. So let's just work through that, ask the community to be patient. And and we'll put forward something that we all can react to next week. And know that knowing where we are in the glide path of the COVID rates and the else, we're still in pretty good shape. But I know there'll be some disappointment out there if 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 we get to the point where we can turn things on and we haven't done all the the COVID protocols and all the stuff we need to do to really reopen. I don't think the the community will like, you know, even one or two weeks of slippage in terms of what possible reopening plans we could we could turn on.
Yeah.
Any board members have anything to say about that, too? But.
I was just going to ask if, and apologies if you already said this, but the plan, Wendy, then tomorrow, when the agenda is posted, is to include in the materials, the schedule, the proposed schedule? Or not till Tuesday? I'm not I'm not I'm not pushing for one or the other.
No, 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 I, you know, I I think that in terms of transparency, that would be the best, you know, opportunity. And and we have devised, you know, we've looked at Plan One and Plan 1A. I will include those in the packet as attachments. But we have also, you know, a recommendation to the board that I'm hopeful we can get completed. you know, a recommendation to the board that I'm hopeful we can get completed by tomorrow. We spent several hours on it today. And, you know, and I think that, you know, that's what the community wants is transparency, and so waiting till Tuesday isn't a solid approach. And so but complete the agenda item in its totality for tomorrow's posting.
Great. Thank you.
All right. I think we can, any other, no more comments have showed up, right, Jamie? Just to make sure. Any other questions in the board or cabinet?
And and the board, you know, just not to put any pressure on you, but, you know, staff is going to make a recommendation, and that's largely, you know, a cabinet recommendation. I'm, you know, I'll be available all weekend to the governing board members who haven't served on the committee, so that we could walk through all of the schedules that'll be put forth, and so that you feel fully informed, you know, even if it's Joe and Dan who have sat on the, on the committees. So one just make that commitment to all of you in case you have questions prior to Tuesday.
That's great, Wendy, because I've seen how it's evolved, and I understand the constraints. I think Dan and I have a pretty good grasp on that, and I understand the trade-offs at every single turn that we've had to make and the push and the pull, teachers, you know, being able to accommodate their concerns and and planning time and prep time and parents and and drop-offs and time of day. There's, there's so many dimensions to this, and at the end, how do you mash all that together in the best fit way? And I, and probably if we do that, no one's gonna be happy. Okay, and we just got to do the best we can. But what I don't want to see is, I think the other option, which I've told, told parents, I said, if we don't find something that gets kids back on campus, the reality is, we might just be in distance learning mode until we can fully reopen. And I don't think anybody wants that. I think we want to have some capability to be on campus, and I think everybody's gonna have to realize, we may have to make some sacrifices to get a model out there, and it won't be perfect. And it just because I, all the constraints.
And I also think that people need to understand that coming back in a hybrid model, and Jamie and Onyekwe and I talked about this today, people need to understand it's not going to be like it was. When, when, you know, we're going to have a, a protocols in place, there's going to be, you know, unidirectional hallways. There are going to be, you know, constraints on, you know, mixing in terms of student interaction. There are going, everyone's going to be wearing a mask. So I, I know that we're all, we all really want to get back to campus, but I also think we need to understand the reality of getting back to campus isn't as campus looked in March of 2020. And so, you know, Jamie had a conversation today. Can you share that, Jamie? I just think it anecdotally typifies something that's really important for the, for everybody to just start to process.
Oh, when I was talking with my intern about the schedule, so I took a, took a crack at presenting 1A and 1 to a student today, because we were doing a session, tech support session, and I explained both to him, and, and I just said, you know, where are you landing? Like, what are you looking, looking for with school? And, and he was a little ambivalent, because distance learning is working for him. I mean, he misses the school connection. But I mean, I think that's what we're finding. Students in different groups have different feelings about this, to be fair about his reaction. But he said, you know, I really do, I do miss school, and I want to get back to the routine, and I, you know, I'd like to be there for as much as possible. And I, when I told him the two schedules, one that would present students being there at two days a week for most of the day, and the other one represents students being there for part of the day. You know, he, when I explained, you know, everybody's sitting facing forward, and your teachers are wearing a mask, and your teachers have to zoom with you kind of in class, so to speak, because they're students at home. And so that's the challenge, is we have these, we have to load at 50%. And you're just walking him through all of that. He's like, I wonder if it's just easier to stay at home, was kind of what he landed at. Of course, he wants to be back, but you know, walking through all of those challenges, I think that's what everybody needs to hear, and getting student impact input was, was important to to work on that. But, you know, they're, they're all eager to be back, but they, there is just a sense that it's gonna suddenly be normal, and it's not. So we have challenges to solve, like, if we do bring back students full day, you know, looking at lunch scheduling, making sure that we're being there as safe as possible for lunch, and, you know, how do hallways work? How does bathroom time work? All of those things are, are concerns for everyone, so we, we have to really spend some time working out those logistics.
And just a side note, Onyekwe needed to leave to attend the GATE parent meeting, so she wanted to extend her apologies for leaving.
Okay. Okay, well, lots of work to do, and I think the longer we drag out this section, the, the, the longer it takes Wendy and the staff to get back at it, because there's some things that they're committing to the public to, to be ready for, for next week. So I think at that point, my summary right now is, I think we're on the right track with the total plan. Karen, great job. It's very thorough. I'm current, we still have some time to look at it till next Tuesday, because it was only the first read. It sounds like of that total piece of work and, and how it was, we're really getting down to to the, a schedule that hopefully we feel good about. But again, we got to emphasize that doesn't preclude us from potentially revising it even after that's submitted. And I, I think we need to put fears at rest a little bit, that we'll do what's right, and we'll course correct, and, 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 and do the best we can. So then I'm gonna close off this agenda item then, okay? All right. Let's move to, I think then we just have consent for tonight, right? For, for the rest of open?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve consent. Thank you, Dan. How about a second?
Second.
Okay, Brent, appreciate it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're approving on consent. So with that, for the, for the public to be aware, we are gonna close off our, and close down our open meeting section. We are gonna, we flipped our schedule this time around. We're actually gonna move into a closed session for us. And, and I think we're gonna be signing off and signing back on in a separate session. But Karen, again, thank you, Derek for joining us and all the prep behind the scenes, and we'll close this off, and we'll see everybody that needs to attend closed and closed. All right?